Congratulations.
Mrs. Mello?
Counselor Susan, be with us. Counselor Perry? Absent. Counselor Mello?
Present.
Counselor Lambert?
Present.
Counselor DiMederos?
Present.
Counselor Shabbat?
Present.
Counselor Pelletier?
Yes, ma'am.
All present.
Seaside Gas Station and Stone Bridge Abutment Discussion on Construction, Project Engineering, Legal Arrangements, Funding Mechanism, and Project Administration Oversight. This was Councilman Pelletier's item. I will pretty much let him lead the way. I do know that Matt would like a presentation from the engineer, I think, and he wants to give us an update on a meeting that occurred yesterday.
Thank you. I think that's a safe place to start so that we're all on the same page with the... Yeah, so get us up to speed.
Yeah, hello, hello, room?
Yeah, we've got a little feedback there for a second. So Jack Madden is here. Jack, come up to the table, and while you're preparing yourself, this afternoon I distributed electronically to the town council yet another letter from... There's more than enough copies here for everybody who's in the room, so I'll just pass it around that way. Counselor Susan, if you put it out at the table, yet another letter from the Rhode Island Department of Transportation's Chief Engineer, Acting Chief Engineer, David Fish, who has been personally engaged in this issue really since the wintertime. And in that letter, he provides the town with his best breakdown of both sides of the ledger for this project, both the source of funds and the available funds. And he describes in some detail there where all the funds were derived from, and he describes, but does not associate a value to, three streams of expenditures. And those three streams of expenditures that have been charged against the Stone Bridge account are our engineering contract with VHB, the purchase of the seaside gas station, and the so-called access project that was done in the 2011 timeframe by Aetna Bridge. In a meeting yesterday that I called in my office that involved RIDOT, including Mr. Fish, and engineering staff from VHB, I had two objectives. One was to drill down and get this letter issued by RIDOT, and the other was contract accountability and contract status discussion. And for the town, we had the town planner, the town treasurer, and the town administrator present, along with Peter Skorze personally for the town solicitor. And I know the town treasurer and the solicitor are here this evening, and so is Mark. What we asked specifically was for a breakdown of those costs and where were they scored? And they were all scored against the Stone Bridge Abutment Project account. So the $200,000 the town spent in 2014 for the purchase of seaside gas was deducted from this project account, as was the close to $136,000 or so thousand dollars from the Aetna Bridge project, and the, at this point, according to our internal records, a total since 2004 to present of nearly $260,000 worth of engineering. Under the current fixed-fee contract, I think we have billed and been reimbursed for $203,000. The contract cap is $230,000. That prior amount is engineering work that was done prior to the fixed-fee contract. That would have been old Stone Bridge Committee work from back 2004, 2005 timeframe. Those funds were drawn against two sources of federal funds. In 2004, a $100,000 grant brought in by Senator Lincoln Chafee that was supposed to have been matched by the state to the $225,000. And a subsequent earmark from Congressman Patrick Kennedy, and the commonly tossed-around figure is $369,000. I think the precise figure is in Mr. Fish's letter, was $368,973. It was the actual federal earmark when it materialized. So those are the sources of federal funds that were used for those three purposes that I just outlined, with very little remaining balance. The good news in that context is that in prior conversations with RIDOT, they were insisting that a number of project components had been scored against the 2.33 million, which is funds that have been transferred by the town of Tiverton, at the request of the town of Tiverton, from a main road improvement project to the Stone Bridge project. As it turns out, the entire 2.33 million is still available for this project. When you look through Mr. Fish's letter, you will see how he believes the project will now break out spending against the remaining balance of that 2.33 million. So that contractor line item is what he projects is available for the actual construction of the project. He sets aside close to $159,000 for RIDOT contract administration. All of those tasks that appear in that line item and in that conversation are tasks that must be done by law when you obligate federal funds for a construction project. You have to do all of your compliance effort with all the civil rights compliance, all the minority business, all the bidding documents, and then acceptance of the asset, including all the engineering tests that go into the as-built conditions. RIDOT still believes that they would do that work and that they would basically absorb $159,000 worth of funds for that. They also set aside a line item for VHB for $100,000. In the conversation yesterday, I asked the question, and it was answered, are we to accept that another $100,000 is required from this project budget to take this project from the final deliverable in the contract with VHB to the point of the bidding process? Does it really... Will it really take $100,000 to do that? And I asked, or is that just a change order that frankly should be absorbed by VHB in its existing fixed-fee contract? The chief engineer from RIDOT said to my face, said to all of us assembled in the room, that he believed and accepted VHB's representation, that it would take that $100,000 to take their final set of plans and convert it into the actual construction plans that would be used for the project. There are other offsets in there. There's some police details that are required to move construction equipment in and out of a job of this size. There's $10,000 in the budget for that, and there's a contingency line. So that is the... As far as RIDOT is concerned, that is the status of the budget, that is the source of funds, and that is how they propose to outline those funds. I asked Mr. Madden to be here and give a presentation because I believe there's an update that is necessary to the town council to understand what is the project right now, after your conversations, preliminary conversations with the programming agencies, and what is this thing going to look like? And how many of the amenities that were previously discussed as potential add-ons are actually going to be feasible now based on the revised budget?
Before we get there, can I like to take an opportunity to ask some questions? The first being, have... I'm trying. Have we been able to reconcile these numbers with our own internal accounting?
Yeah, so the second document I'm going to hand around is a timeline that was put together for the benefit of everyone here tonight, make sure my double-sided copies worked out. Timeline put together by the town treasurer, which refers... Which goes back through all of the invoices that appear in your backup to arrive at the billed amount 26860.61, of which we have received reimbursement so far for $260,0669.
So I guess my question is, so we have a contract, the Third and Fourth Amendment of the TCSB with the state of Rhode Island that outlines $2,600,000...
$59,000.
$59,000.
Correct.
And this also... I mean, this letter from RIDOT doesn't quite jive with how we understood the transaction at seaside gas was to occur.
That's correct.
So I guess what gives is my... So is this... Is the answer to that question, no, we have not been able to reconcile these estimates? Or these numbers?
No, I would be a little bit more cynical than that. I don't think that RIDOT delivered to you what they promised to you in February of 2014 because the conversation at that time, and remember, that's just prior to my study with the town, was we had quote-unquote "found" some source of funds with another $200,000, and because we found that money, we could use it for seaside gas. In the final analysis, that is not what happened. There was no other source of funding. It's not documented anywhere. I asked Mr. Fish yesterday, did you ever see any documentation to prove that that funding existed? Answer, no. So when...
So who wrote the check for the extra $200,000?
So in the end of 2013, if you refer to the closing documents and the clerk's certification with the executive session of the Tiverton Town Council, the town council authorized there was a whole list of sources of funds to be used for the purchase of the seaside gas property, one of which was a no-brainer. It was the RIDOT acquisition grant for a close to a little bit more than $200,000. That left you $200,000 short of the purchase price, which was $400,000, and there's a list of sources of funds that could be used. One of the items in that list was the Stone Bridge Abutment Account for $200,000. That's the $200,000 that shows up in the 2014 contract amendment as now being available for this. But there's no documentation of any new or additional sources of funds. The only potential possible source of funds on that list for which there wasn't an explanation was the $99,940 from the Kennedy earmark that might have still been outstanding. But if you're looking for it, I think you can find it on the south face of the abutment because the... RIDOT is saying, for better or for worse, that they charged the Stone Bridge account for that project in 2011.
Just one second, Peter. Which I was under the impression, when we talked about that project, that was being paid for with leftover funds from the Sycamore River Bridge project.
And once again, there's no documentation available to the town that suggests that that was the case. The project was bid out, all the bid analysis done, and it got awarded by RIDOT in a paper trail a mile long, and awarded to the lowest bidder, Aetna Bridge, for $136,000.
So how do we justify, or how do we reconcile that $200,000 gas station purchase? Because the contract, the only way we can spend that money is because of Amendment Three and Amendment Four of the TCSP. Otherwise, those funds were not allocated to a gas station purchase. And it's earmarked, RI earmark 037, it's referenced in the contract, but...
First of all, I should state for the record that I wanted RIDOT to be at this meeting, and they declined. So now I'm playing the role of messenger, which is an uncomfortable role for me because I don't necessarily agree with their representation. But the representation is that the entire Kennedy earmark came over and was available for obligation, and it was obligated, both for design work and for the purchase of seaside gas.
I mean, okay, but we are not... We are not able to reconcile their numbers with our own internal accounting.
Because of seaside gas.
Because it's not our accounting. Because of other things as well.
Well, but...
Could I ask for two documents? We had a... We have Attorney Tice's letter. Do you have it? Because I need to see that because he's the one who put this project of the $200,000. And I also want Cicilline's letter giving... Signing the $99,000 left over back to the project because those are documents. I don't care about the DOT at my... At this point, if they can't be in front of us, Matt, please don't defend them because you don't have to.
I don't think he's defending them.
He is. He just said he was... He is. He's making the argument.
Actually, no. I said I was the messenger, and it's an uncomfortable role because I disagree.
We're not here. We needed to get the facts out. So I want Tice's letter, if you have it, and I want Cicilline's letter.
What letter are you referencing?
Tice put together the sale of funds for the purchase of the gas station. And Cicilline gave a letter giving back $99,000 or whatever left from the repair job back to the project. Those letters are around that. Do you have those?
I don't have the Cicilline letter. I don't know what you're talking about, and I've never seen it.
I... That doesn't sound familiar, but I might. I got a lot of...
You seem to have read it, so somebody has it somewhere. So does anybody have it?
No, but I understood that there was one.
I know.
Oh, you understood that there was?
I've read Attorney Tice's letter, but I don't...
We have an enormous package for the closing.
I read this. There's nothing in there with any letters from Tice or the Cicilline letter. Someone has the letter somewhere.
Well, the Tice letter, I can just go in my office and get it. Six thousand pages of backup I gave you.
I have never seen the Cicilline letter.
Yeah. I don't know.
Are you saying there's notes? From what I understand, there was leftover funds. The funds had to get returned. The leftover money had to get back into the embankment. So Cicilline wrote a letter, from what I understand, and gave $99,000 back to the project.
Is Denise here? She was right there. Where'd she go?
Denise's gonna have the letter, won't she? Because it went to the DOT. This project... This money never went anywhere in the town.
Oh, here it is.
Where'd he go? He's got the Tice letter.
Yes.
Which one?
This is a letter confirming... Confirming the language in the Second Amendment of the TCSP for the 2659, and making further recitations to using $100,000 for acquisition and $100,000 for abatement or remediation. And then that number shows up in a lot of the VHB construction cost estimates after that.
What's the date?
December 18, 2013.
Okay. Because the most... The controlling document is the closing document from June 18, 2014. Pursuant to that Certain Transportation Community and System Preservation Agreement, Amendment Two, by and between the State of Rhode Island Providence Plantations, Town of Tiverton, for the Old Stone Bridge Beautification Project, Town of Tiverton tenders this invoice in connection with the acquisition of Lot 104 Tax Assessors Platt 35, commonly known as the seaside gas station. As part of the other related amenities adjacent to or in approach to the Old Stone Bridge Abutment Pier and the adjacent Grinnell's Beach Main Road, documentation of acquisition costs is attached. Total amount due, $200,000, and it's stamped by Stephen Devine, who's a senior official in Rhode Island Department of Transportation. What follows in this, yet another very large package of paper, is all of the documentation releasing those funds to the town and the closing documents associated with the seaside gas purchase. It's voluminous, but if you follow the account numbers carefully in the barcodes on this state purchase order, this is the Stone Bridge Abutment Project account.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to get too stuck in the mud here, but I guess my final comment is, the only way we had the legal authority to expend money from the Stone Bridge account was by opening the door with Amendment Two of the contract. I mean, I don't understand... No?
Amendment... Yes, Amendment Two is where they promise you 2.659 million.
Right.
Right.
And then it disappears, and they say, guess what? We're not gonna... I mean, I don't...
I guess the bottom line is, they promised you funds they didn't give you, but the check was drawn against the account anyway. So when you're estimating what you think the total resources available to the community are, you're overestimating by $200,000, and you're missing the fact that the $200,000 was taken and it was used.
Yeah. I guess what concerns me is that we allowed that to happen, or at least we didn't notice that it was happening. That's the whole problem with this project. I don't know. So it looks like we're off by about $100,000 in our understanding. We had assumed we had $2.33 million to complete this project as of the most recent amendment, et cetera. And we have what looks like $2.23 million, so we're off by $100,000. You know?
Having said that...
Could I go back to the Cicilline letter? So what happened with the extra money that was left over for the Kennedy funds that were given for the improvement? What happened to that money?
There is no record of what happened to that money. But that money...
So that's the $99,000 that...
That money is engrossed into the figure of 468973.
There was a leftover money. And from what I understand, could you contact Cicilline's office to see if there was a letter? Because I'm going to tomorrow.
I'm happy to do that, and you can do as well, but I'm afraid that I need to clarify something. At the outset, referring to Mr. Fish's letter, the available balances of federal funds for the project are a combination of $100,000 from a grant from Lincoln Chafee's earmark and 368973, an earmark from Patrick Kennedy. If all of those funds were obligated by the engineering contract, the purchase of seaside gas, and the South Face repointing and some of the work that was done on top of the abutment, the sum total of those three projects is over $560,000. So if anything, the town has overspent all of its federal earmarks, and DOT has absorbed about $100,000 worth of those costs. Those funds simply weren't available from any federal source, so it had to come from the state. The town didn't do it.
Matt, when you say the town overspent, are we in control of that project? We're not?
No, I don't think the town overspent it. I think that who drew down...
Who did the overspending?
The state?
State or...
Here's the problem you have. Those federal funds... I guess I have to clarify a very simple reality about how these things work. The congressman doesn't come back with the check and give it to the town treasurer, and then the town treasurer cashes it, and it sits in an account. That's not how this works. The federal funds come through the pass-through agency, which is RIDOT. And RIDOT says to the town, this sum of money is available for drawdown. You pay the bills, and then you submit to us for reimbursement. Okay? So the mechanics are convoluted somewhat even further by the fact that if RIDOT used those funds for the bridge and administered the contract all on their own, because the entire South Face project was completely run by RIDOT, and then they charged this account, they overspent the account, not the town.
Right. So is there any way of getting a copy of those bills from RIDOT or whoever the contractors were who did the work? I mean, someone's got to have something. And I'm asking you because I don't know where to go with this.
If those bills aren't in your backup, then they're on...
Yeah, but that... It's not an actual receipt.
Well, I was telling you what...
No. The bill award and the invoices, I can get you, too. That was news to me today, frankly, because I believed, as Councilman Pelletier believed, because there's a lot of discussion at the time, there's press releases and news reports, that quote-unquote, "This is an access grant." This project was all about access, and it was going to be funded and managed entirely by RIDOT from a pool of money that wasn't related to the Stone Bridge project funds originally. And they have charged that project against the Stone Bridge project.
But who gave them that authority? I thought the town council is the only thing, the only one that can approve the disbursements of these funds.
Not that one, because it's not ours.
No.
I'm a little confused because I... So on this project, though, we need to give them approval to move forward, but yet they can spend the funds whenever they want. Is that what you're telling me? Because I'm very confused.
I think the treasurer wants to speak.
I think the treasurer wants to speak, but I think Counselor Mello's question is well placed. What authority now does the RIDOT come back to us and say, "We charged that Aetna Bridge project to the Stone Bridge project"? I have searched for and not found any authorization from any town council for that project from these funds.
But we did contact them. Like when the bridge collapsed, they were contacted.
And they were given money to do it.
Well, I mean, the council knew what was going on, going on all along. Even though we didn't have control of the money, we actually contacted them and told them that a piece of the bridge had fallen into the Sycamore River, and they took action because we saw it as a hazard.
But to Counselor Mello's point...
Well, where did you think the money was going to come from?
No, but to Counselor Mello's point, the contract, the First Amendment and the Second Amendment to the contract, the town is clearly the party that obligates the funds. Fact of the matter is, the town council still is. You have not changed that authority at all. So it's a valid question that's well-placed. How did the Aetna Bridge project get funded out of the Stone Bridge account without the authorization of the Tiverton Town Council? That's a question.
I had a couple of questions, if I could, Matt, present, please.
Could we do it?
Well, I've been waiting patiently, so before we move off of this subject, and it's just reading this letter from DOT, from David Fisher, dated June 22. And in the last paragraph, he talks about the money will be obligated in fiscal year 2016, provided all the... It's saying basically that the plan has to go to CRMC for approval. Has a plan been submitted to CRMC?
And my answer is absolutely not. Not until the town council authorizes the administration to take that step. You need to be fully satisfied with all of the documentation with the project before we do that. Well, yes, there is a timeframe for CRMC.
We heard this presentation. This was the plan that was going to go forward.
No.
With the wall on the side of Stone Bridge. I'm not talking about the beach. I'm talking about the plan we heard. That was a bid?
No.
We never made a decision.
Didn't make a decision.
No, but that's the plan that was... They're asking us to approve.
Well, that's why I have Mr. Madden here, is to give you the latest and greatest, so you can ask him specific questions about the plan.
Well, I think we can move on to that, Dan, and stop dwelling on the past because we need to move forward and get this done, not dwelling where the money was, this and that. It's happened. We have funds now. Let's get this moving forward and get the bridge...
It is mine.
You know, because I think we're getting set up for a big scam here if a plan hasn't, you know... You know, I don't... My experience with CRMC, I mean, just ask the Seafair where they're at for two years trying to just repair a stone wall. This could drag out a couple more years.
What I would like to do is follow a logical pattern in going through this information, and that's the second bullet point in this exercise, is what's our plan going forward? But we're not quite there yet.
We're three quarters of an hour. It's still talking about Congressman Kennedy and this.
Joe, this is a very important matter that...
You know, the money is... There's money available. Let's get to the plan. Let's try to get this thing moving forward with the DOT.
Okay. I think spending 45 minutes on something that we've been fiddling around with for over a decade is time well-spent when we're in the final...
We don't have an answer still, so...
Pretending like the problem doesn't exist isn't a solution either.
I'm not pretending it doesn't exist.
Okay. Well, I would like the floor again to continue asking questions about...
It's like most of this in government, it doesn't work well.
I will follow. Go ahead, Matt.
If you really want to go into it, we had a committee working on this.
I was on it, I know.
And the company decided that the planners should handle it, when we had competent people taking care of this account, so...
You're talking about the past now, Joe. That's against the rules.
Well, I mean, you want to go back in the past. There's no use dwelling over it now. Let's move forward.
Okay. What I'm trying to understand is, even their DOT's recitations are inconsistent. We have a contract with DOT whereby it spells out $2,659,000, $2,127,200 of which is federal money, and $531,800 is state money. Even if you back out the $204,000 that never seemed to materialize, we're not talking about the same numbers. It just doesn't make any sense. I don't understand how we can accept this as an accounting method, that we start... We all agree that there's $2,659,000 in an account, and they're working off of a different, a totally different set of numbers, and it just makes no sense to me. And so I guess I'm really concerned that we have a fundamental disagreement as to what the contract says and what, where money, their money is actually coming from. I actually don't care where the money comes from. I don't care who set it up. I don't care who earmarked it and where it came from and how it's getting moved around. What I'm interested in is the $2,659, whether it's $2,330,000 now, which is what we assumed it was, which is what is in the letter from DOT from a week ago, you know, is this the most schizophrenic agency I've ever had? I mean, it doesn't make any sense. So that begs the question, if we have contracted authority over this project, how are we allowed this usurping of... I mean, how is that a legal way of spending money? Actually, we told you we were going to pay for it out of a separate account, but at the end of the day, we screwed you twice. I mean, that is just not an answer I accept as reasonable. But if we are close on, close to about 100,000, to a difference of about $100,000, I think we can put that aside and say, "We'll figure out..." I mean, we'll talk about that later, maybe, or figure it out later. And what is the current status with 2.23 million instead of 2.33 million? What's got to go? I mean, I mean, yeah, as far as I'm concerned, we have a lot of, we have a lot of decision and authority that needs to be exercised in what this project looks like and what the next step is. And I guess maybe that brings us to VHB, so we can understand what's been going on. I mean, I've got a problem with a contract that was supposed to be initially $170,000 or whatever, turning into $260,000 plus another $120,000. I mean, this is just getting outrageous. But at the end of the day, we've got the plans and let's, I guess, let's talk about them.
I just wanted to interrupt for a second, because I know the treasurer did want to say something. Did you want to add to this conversation?
All I wanted to add was to clarify something that Matt said, and yes, Brett, I do agree with you, what you just said. Every dollar other than $750 that we have spent has been reimbursed by RIDOT. We don't spend anything. We don't get any money. It's all money that gets approved from stuff that we do and then submit for reimbursement. So I just wanted to make sure that in the audience, when you're talking about overspending or money coming in or money being lost, that that's not...
It's not here.
Here.
I mean, theoretically, and this is a legal question for Peter, perhaps, theoretically, we have a contract for 2.459 million, let's just say, if you back out the $200,000 that was given to us from nowhere. If we spend that money, as is laid out in the contract, and we audit and we certify our expenditures for reimbursement, how is it possible the state would say no?
Well, to the theoretical question?
I think the evident answer is that they can't, because they're contractually obligated to...
You speak, you come back.
I'm sorry. They're obligated to fulfill their contractual obligation. That being said, from a practical standpoint, I did sit in with a meeting with Matt and DOT the other day, but as far as hard data, to say this is how the money was allocated, I haven't reviewed it, so I can't give... I don't feel in a position to give a thorough legal opinion on that.
I mean, this contract, and if anybody hasn't read it, it's worth reading, because it's pretty straightforward what the responsibilities of each entity are, and it spells out very specifically what the process is for fulfilling these requirements for reimbursement. They are very specific. There is a project, a project manager or project administrator, and they have to certify these expenditures and send them in for review, and then they get... I mean, it's a process, like any other reimbursement process, but...
And what the treasurer just detailed is that on our end, that works the way it's been designed to work. And then that second issue of the purchase of seaside gas, like it or not, this account was on the list of things that the town council authorized, the solicitor and the interim administrator at the time, to spend from in order to execute the sale of the purchase of seaside gas. So there is no exercise of spending authority above and beyond what was authorized by the town council. The town council operated under the assumption that that promise made in that contract, that there was an extra 200,000, was true. And the council sitting at the time had every reason to believe that. It had been represented to them by credible people. So they believed it. But when it went to closing, that 200,000 didn't show up, and the account was charged 200,000. But the actual authorization for the town's agent to do that was in order. Was it not communicated successfully back to the council? I think that's this, because it was not quite this council yet that was sitting at the time. He didn't get elected until November, and this transaction was in June. But four of you were here.
Could I ask you to interrupt? I would like a letter from Andrew Tights regarding that whole scenario.
Mm-hmm.
Because it sounds to me like he's getting thrown under the bus, because if he did something legal and there was a contract there, then I want to make sure. Maybe he should come in front of us to explain.
Oh, I don't think he... I just, I didn't throw him away. I just pulled him out from underneath the bus.
He had a story to do when he was doing it. $1,000 that supposedly was fabricated or whatever. I want him in front of us or a letter from him to explain what transpired with that sale and that agreement that he made. I want him to explain this as well.
The final thing I'll say on this is, no matter whether there were misrepresentations to the council, I think even in that situation, it does not give, it does not give the authority of the town council to break a contract or to... I mean, the only, like I said, the only way it is legal for us to take money out of that account is because we signed a contract that specifically and explicitly says, "You can do this only because there's $204,000 allocated under an earmark that we're funneling in." I mean, I just, absent that, we don't have the authority to spend that money. But I'm not a lawyer, so I guess if the council is amenable, we can move on to our update from the VHB.
Go right ahead.
Hi. So we've been on this Stone Bridge abutment since 2004, and I'm not going to get into the history or the detailed history of the project.
Thank you.
But yes, money has been spent in design. There have been a lot of alternatives developed for, and discussions had about what exactly to do with the bridge. And I can start a history of my involvement with the project, which begins around March of 2016, when VHB was given directive from the town and after a discussion with the RIDOT about moving forward with a design that could be permitted and built on a fast track. And from that moment, in March, we have met every deadline asked of us, and we developed different designs and presented them to both the town at a town council meeting, May 23rd, and also to the CRMC, whom we're submitting our permit application to, once the decision is made to do so. If you'd like, I can go through the basic design features of our current design. I don't know if this is a good place to do it.
Can you just talk into the microphone?
Yeah.
You can talk. You can use that microphone.
Can I also interject? In March, there was a meeting at the...
Joe.
With Matt.
Does that microphone come on?
Whoa, Jack. And there was a design presented at that meeting, too. Did you, you were aware of that, too?
And I can show you, I can show you that design.
Do that one for us, if you don't mind.
Sure, I will.
Can I just make a, to ask a question? The reason we were doing this fast track and cost engineering or value engineering was because we had bogus information from the state that said this thing was only going to, we only had, first of all, we had $100,000 or $137,000 left, which is ridiculous. And then it took us six months to chase down the fact that we had $1,006,000 or $1,007,000. I mean, we've been spinning our wheels for a year. You've been drawing things that are thrown on the floor in a week, because, I mean, we did this already, three times. I'm just frustrated that we're having to pay an engineer to do modifications and redrawings and all that stuff on a design that is totally useless, because it was, it was based upon the fact that we could only have $1,006,000 to fund the project.
Again, I can't, I can't speak to RIDOT's funding, but that design that was presented in March is a fourth of six designs that have been, that have been developed since 2012. That design featured a riprap abutment with a sheeting, sheeting driven at the toe of the slope. The distance between the existing face of the wall and the bottom of the sheeting is 20 feet off into the CRMC jurisdiction. When we presented that to CRMC, they indicated to us that they weren't comfortable with that much fill in their tidal water. And so they suggested that we look to a design that reflected the existing condition of a vertical face wall. And we developed two more plans with that vertical face wall, or, I'm sorry, the, two more plans with less fill in the tidal water. One had a vertical face wall and one had a similar slope revetment, but with the structure of the wall inboard of the existing wall. So basically narrowing the top of the abutment. Now, there's several different criteria that we have to look at when we evaluate these different alternatives. One is, can you build it? Two is, is there enough in the budget to build it? And one of other considerations has to be, how will the bids come in when it goes out to bid? Will there be competitive bidding, or will the bids be really high because the techniques that would be required would be so specialized and the unknowns would be so onerous that the contractor would have to bid high on the contract in order to walk away making money? So we feel, after that whole process of developing these alternatives, doing cost analysis on each one, and we feel as though, based on our conversation with CRMC, alternative five with, that we're showing on our CRMC permit plans and our pre-90% design plans, we feel like it's, that's the best plan going forward to get ourselves through the CRMC permitting process, get through the rest of the design, which includes the detailing and the final design plans, contract documents, advertising bid process to construction.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Matt, was anyone, Mark, did you attend to any of these meetings with the CMRC?
CRMC knows you're there.
You are our manager, right? Our project manager on this project, right? You were responsible, right? I just wanted to ask. Thank you. Because I personally think that we should go back to them and have a discussion about a better, a better plan, in my personal opinion.
Yeah. You said CRMC, and we had heard this, the last meeting, we spoke about this, that CRMC was uncomfortable with the amount of fill that, with, for a riprap. I mean, half of the abutment right now is riprap. Was that...
That is not true.
Okay.
Most of, what they consider is the existing structure. They're not, the fact that some of it has fallen into the water is not what they consider. They consider, what is the intent of that in the original... Right now, we're encroaching in their water and their, you know, the emergency repair that was done was, was done, and they mentioned this at the meeting, that that's not typically how they would do an emergency repair, allowing fill to enter the water there. They would usually make that a more difficult process. But given the situation, they made a decision, and now they're, they're trying to walk it back to the original footprint of the bridge. Now, we set that meeting up, I will say, that we set that meeting up with the Assistant Director, Executive Director, Jeff Willis, and he assigned two of his project managers to the, to our meeting. And I attended that meeting with our permitting expert, environmental permitting expert, Sue Moberg, from our office. And we do that in order to facilitate a smooth and efficient process through permitting. As it is right now, that permit is going, if we delivered it today, that permit will take at least six months to review. And that process, because it's a category B maintenance ascent with a special exception, because we are adding fill into the tidal zone, that requires a full council hearing, public notice. And given that the summer season, they only meet once a month, that process could be extended due to that. So we're, you know, if, right now, if we were to deliver that today, we're looking at possibly going into summer 2018 beach season with this project not done. And that is our, that's what's driving our aggressive schedule and trying to get the permit through.
Could I interject again?
Sure.
So we have a local, no one from our town, this is our project. You went and had and had a meeting without our town involved. There was the bridge, the old train bridge that was removed that changed the currents and everything. And so I thought maybe it would be better with our local attorney, Cox, is on our CMC. Why was, was he invited? Was anyone from our town even invited to this meeting? Was anyone from our town even invited to this meeting? I think we should have our local input.
Okay.
I don't agree with what you guys are doing.
That's not typically how we do it.
Well, but it's our project.
But I did, I followed up with the town the day after that meeting and indicated that we met.
But it wasn't before the meeting. We should have been invited to that meeting.
I delivered the minutes of the meeting to the town. And--
Here's one thing that really concerns me. The language you're using, and I don't mean to pick on you, but you're the guy that showed up, so you're the one that's getting picked on.
Sure.
The language you're using about the aggressive timing is not jiving with the reality that I think a lot of us have been through. We jumped up and down on this a year ago because we were concerned about the beach season. And that, this is when we keep getting told, well, you've got to have your bid documents in by X deadline or you're never going to get it done in the construction season for the next year. That's already gone. So, the idea that this, we are somehow fast-tracking this, just doesn't make sense to me because we were trying to fast-track this 18 months ago to no avail. I just don't, maybe this is -- I mean, who has project ownership here and is really coordinating this entire project is not apparent to me. And furthermore, if we're going, if we're likely looking at, first of all, that schedule also doesn't jive with DOT's threat that if we don't spend the month, if we don't have the permits in place by September 30th of this year, who knows what will happen?
Right.
I mean, if we're talking about a six-month permit time, then we have time to talk about this, I think. Because if we're not going to go to bid for a construction season next year, then, I mean, that concerns me. And I also, I mean--
How about that, Dave?
I mean, it's frustrating because I've been on this council for six years and I've been paying attention to this story for a lot longer than that. And we've been talking about a riprap repair for a long time. And nobody ever said, hey, hang on a minute, that's not a good idea, or CRMC is going to have a problem with that. Even a preliminary floater to say, you know, we're thinking about spending $2.5 million to repair this bridge, do you think maybe riprap's a good idea? I mean, this doesn't make any sense to me from a project management standpoint that we are this far into the game and all of a sudden now, somebody says riprap's not a good idea in the water. We also, do we know what will happen if we essentially put a bulkhead on the north side of the Stone Bridge? Because we already have tremendous problems with the way the tide has moved. When the Sycamore River Bridge comes down, do we know how that's going to affect? I don't want to put up an abutment that's got a flat-faced wall that as soon as the water hits that at the pace it's going, it bounces off the quality yacht bulkhead and it spins around in and it comes in with even more force and it pulls Main Road along with it. I mean, I don't, these are the things I don't know. And it concerns me because I've seen a lot of crazy stuff down on the waterfront lately. Just that turnstile being removed just screwed up everything.
Madam President, can I ask Mr. Madden a couple of questions that might help?
Yep.
Actually, I'm going to make Brett more angry, I think. Jack, your firm has how much experience dealing with CRMC?
Extensive.
Extensive experience. And so you're familiar with the Red Book?
Yes.
The Red Book being a 270-page document, federal, state statutes and all the CRMC regulations, correct?
It's not my area of expertise. I don't claim to know the Red Book by rote.
Neither do I, but I've been forced to look at it because I followed up with CRMC. It's not a matter of the CRMC being uncomfortable with riprap in the tidal zone. Frankly, I'm disappointed that VHB submitted a plan to CRMC in light of 300.7 of the regulations, which is that fill in the tidal zone is prohibited. You can never do that. So, my frustration today, because I must have been getting a vibe from Councilman Pelletier, was that it looks like a lot of design work went into coming up with what might be a feasible construction project, an affordable construction project, but without the boundaries of what the regulations were going to allow you to do. And then I asked further, well, when you saw the plans, it involved significant amount of riprap off the north face and around the bend and northerly along Main Road, were you presented with any evidence of the erosion activities that have occurred with, the stone blocks are actually falling out of the retaining wall on Mr. Kigman's property and it's visible to everyone? And the response I got with one of the people you met with was, no, we weren't presented with any of this conversation. So, how far into the tidal zone does your selected plan now go? You were at 20 feet. So what are you suggesting now with the sheet piles and the stone on top?
We are currently three feet.
Three feet.
Mm-hmm.
And anything more than one foot is considered new construction by CRMC?
Yes.
That's the footing we're on in terms of regulations. So you're going to go with that least intrusive plan?
Yes.
And you're not going to put any riprap along the seawall underneath Main Road on the Kigman property?
Again, permitting with CRMC is not my field of expertise, but I do trust my experts at VHB. We have extensive knowledge of the permitting process. And my understanding of Section 370 of the Red Book is that if you do fill within the tidal zone, you have to apply for a special exception, which is the full-blown council, you know, full council meeting.
But you can't avoid it at this point. No matter what you do, you have to go through that process.
Exactly. But we feel it's a strong case to make, given the importance of, because they consider not just the actual act of filling in the water, they consider the whole picture, which is we're protecting Tiverton Basin. We're providing a public recreation facility. Both very strong criteria to meet CRMC permit requirements. Constructibility, we have a cantilevered sidewalk that we can't manage without demolishing prior to controlling the water with sheeting. So that's where we get our three-foot offset, where we anticipate either having the contractor pick every stone up off the beach before they drive sheeting or use the existing rubble that falls in our structure and make it a less onerous and less costly project. So, those are the features that we presented in our application, which is waiting to be submitted. And we feel it's a strong case. We've, what we've shown them is 20 feet. We're coming back to them with three feet, which is a pretty large concession. And we feel it's a good case.
Question. I'm done. Just want to understand, you're saying you're going to cut back what's there, drive the sheeting behind the footing and put the new riprap just on top of what's existing, the existing footing?
No.
Is that what I'm understanding?
No. All right. So, I'll leave this up if anybody wants to take a closer look. But the basic idea is the footprint of the bridge will remain the same, meaning that the outside faces of the wall at the top of the wall will be the same as it is now. What we are doing is we are removing that cantilevered sidewalk section from the north wall.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you just back up? You said the outside facing of, I missed what, I was trying to visualize what you were saying and I couldn't figure it out.
Okay. So, the outside faces of the wall is as they are now. So, on both sides, the south side and the north side, will remain in the same alignment as they are today. What we're doing--
So, the granite facing on the north side?
Exactly. The stone facing at the top of the wall will be the same.
Okay.
What we're doing to, when we remove that cantilevered section of sidewalk, we're basically going to be removing the top four feet of the wall plus any collateral structure that falls with the demolition process. And we'll have sheeting driven three feet off the face of the wall. The sheeting will serve as water protection so they can work in that zone. And it'll also serve as our form to pour concrete against the existing wall to a height of 6.5 feet. That allows us to build a remaining height of wall, which varies anywhere from eight feet to 12 feet, using granite stone with an existing facade as it has today. Same kind of stone, same kind of mortar.
But the whole thing will be out three feet further to the north than it is currently?
From elevation 6.5--
Yep.
--to the existing grade. So what you'll see--
So that's not what was presented to us three weeks ago?
No, it is. The three feet is not. We've refined this plan since--
It was also a stamped concrete facade. And also, the sheet piles were going to be higher than the abutment.
Right.
That's what was represented to us when I asked. They said it would be at the level of the sidewalk and in some cases, higher.
No. I'm sorry, I mean, this is--
I mean, it wasn't you--
Essentially the same section that we showed, I mean, I have the plans that we showed last time with me.
Which didn't match the ones we had, but, I mean--
We delivered those plans to the town three weeks before that meeting. And we presented them, and it's hard in this format to really show and to look at the details of the plan. I understand being able to, you know, trying to conjure it up, I mean, I'm sure you guys don't have a picture of it because it's hard to see, but, you know, if you want to take a closer look, please come up and look at it.
I mean, I'm not getting this wrong. I wouldn't have been jumping up and down as hard as I have been about design recently if there was even a mention of granite.
Thank you.
The word never even came into that hearing. It was stamped concrete or a composite material.
Correct.
I mean, that's what, I think that's what a lot of people were kind of going crazy about, is that what was this thing going to look like? And the height of a pile, a sheet pile that would now be three feet further north and it would be taller than the actual level of the abutment today, just totally threw everybody off a cliff.
No, that's not at all what the plan is. I mean, but--
Are they lying?
I mean, I just don't--
No. I'll show you the plans that we delivered and that we presented. It's, I'm sure it's possible that it was misunderstood in the presentation.
No.
I mean, I'm not an engineer. I'm not an engineer, but that's the whole point of engineers, being here to answer questions. I mean, if you were here three weeks ago to answer those questions, I think we'd be having a different conversation than we are today.
Okay. Well--
Do you have--
Would you like to take some time to look at?
Yeah, I would, actually. That might not be a bad idea.
Let's pass it down right down the line.
I'm just wondering, while everybody's looking, Jack, Madam President, can I ask him a couple of questions while, because it'll be pertinent so people can look and see. I may have understood it different in that meeting. I may have understood there was going to be stone above the sheet, that's what I remembered. But I think I understand where others got different messages. What is involved for long-term maintenance of a structure that you are proposing in this design?
Well, the, above the waterline, you know, not much different from any other masonry wall in a marine environment. I mean, occasional repointing of the stonework.
But seawater and steel don't get along.
Sure.
So what are you going to do to protect the steel? And what will the town be on the hook for going into the future to protect the steel?
The steel sheeting does have a lifespan. The intent of the design allows for the steel to degrade and still maintain its structural capacity. The reason for that is that it's serving as a form for the concrete, but it's not serving much of a structural, and again, not my field of expertise, but I asked the question, and this is the answer as I understand it, is that we should get maybe 20 years of life out of the steel. And then the steel, if the steel does degrade, then the concrete is capable of withstanding on its own.
For how long?
You know, that's a good question. What is the lifespan of a bridge? Every bridge has a lifespan and you design for that based on your budget. I can't answer that question, but, you know, if the steel has a lifespan of 20 years, then it's something north of that. But I could get that answer for you.
So let me ask a question, because there is a phrase that I heard that I didn't like at all three weeks ago that you're not using tonight. And that's the words, "flowable fill." You're talking about concrete. Are you talking about concrete that's poured to resist seawater with all the sulfate and other considerations put in place?
We're talking about tremmy concrete, which is for that application. And also, you know, there is additives you can put in the concrete that will resist the salt environment. We will consider all those options. There's no--
But you have it profoundly different--
We haven't done specified--
Profoundly different than flowable fill poured into a hole that may have rocks in it, too.
I think that was a term, I think that was a term that might have been used loosely in that instance.
Wow, okay. You're not that guy, so I'm not going to roast you over what he said. But is it also true that there may be an epoxy-based paint that would have to be applied for the steel the last 20 years or would it last longer than 20 years? You worked out the base.
Patinaed. Like the bridge, when they just built the bridge, I'm pretty sure they have no patinaed. It, you know, gets a patina on it that presents a rust, like the bridge. I mean, that steel's available. It's very expensive, though, that sheeting, so. I mean, all those islands are building out and they're trying to see, that's what they're using out there now.
Last open-ended question, Jack. There's also, I guess it's a polymer-based sheet pile. And did you consider it? And if you ruled it out, why did you do that?
If you're talking about, yeah, like a fiberglass or resin, we did, we did consider that. For our application, there wasn't enough rigidity to withstand the forces of the liquid concrete. And so steel is the option that we would recommend in this case.
I just had a question because, I don't know, going back on how many plans, I'm going back, but at one point, they were talking about driving the sheeting down the center of the bridge. And just, I understand what they're saying about the riprap in the water, but it would just seem to me if we were pulling the north side back and driving the sheeting, you know, on the existing bridge, I don't understand why we couldn't just go riprap all the way down the north side like we're proposing, provided we're going, because basically, you're only going down as deep as the footing. So, I don't, I just, what happened to that plan? I mean, you just, you said CRMC rejected that, but that's not exactly what was talked about originally. Originally, it was to pull sidewalk down, pull the wall down, drive the sheeting down the middle first, I guess, and then pull those walls down and just do riprap on the north side, which made so much more sense. It would kind of look like the rest of the basin with the mariner across the way and everything.
That was one of the options that we considered. It, caller, if you want to take a look, it's alternative three, which was developed in 2014. And we presented that to RIDE expert, actually--
Yeah.
--who was concerned that by driving sheeting inside the bridge footprint, that there's a good chance we would hit obstruction. And-- And, and so they, they didn't recommend that, that path.
Well, they might have had to dig a one-foot trench down the center of the bridge to drive the, you know, when that bridge was constructed, basically, they built two walls and filled the middle in as they went.
Mm-hmm. Well, you have to, the depth that the sheathing needs to go, I think they're concerned below the, uh-
Yeah, well, they didn't do any coring, so they don't know what's there, but-
There are borings that have been done?
Yeah, well, I know they did a repair.
Well, no.
One section where they put in the gravel. But what did they, what did, I know they found the footing, too, I understand.
They did $38,000 worth of borings with the GZA-
Yeah.
Back in 2010.
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right, so they drove, you know, downright, when they built the new Skana River Bridge, I mean, for the pier and stuff, you know, I mean, I don't get it. You know, as far as CRMC, I mean, if we need some help from our legislators to get through that, like, maybe we should do what Peter suggested and all go up to that meeting and try to stick it to them, because, I don't know. My experience with those people haven't been good. I could go on with stories, but, but watching projects, just little, small projects that people needed done right away because they were losing their front yard and it took two years just to put erosion mattresses down. So it's, that was another option, too, was the erosion mattresses. I don't know if you're familiar with them, the Geotech, the Gabion.
Those, those have been considered as various alternatives. I think aesthetically, I think it was not-
Well, when I, when we did them out on the end of Logan Airport, they grew ale grass in them, and you can't even see them. The sand was put over it and it prevents the erosion, but it, I'm just, I mean, if you're talking about, you don't want the riprap in the water, the riprap could go over the top of that. I just think there's so many other options that I've seen with constructions. But the, the cheapest one would be to put the piles in the center of the bridge and to put the riprap on the north side. I think that's about all we're going to be able to afford. It seems like CRMC wants to price this thing out of our ability to pay.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's sort of my next question is, when we first, first talked about this, it was sort of a brick-by-brick or slab-by-slab repointing and a reconstruction of the historic structure as it existed as of whatever date. And that, the estimates we got on that were $4 million or something like that. And that was 10 years ago, 15 years ago. What, I mean, now we're talking about granite. We're not talking about concrete. What is the cost differential in this?
Well, we, whoops, we did do a, I have that number, the difference between concrete and stone to give an order of magnitude. One of the issues with replacing the wall in kind is that the existing wall structure does not appear to have a footing that we could use. That's where the advantages of our existing design is that we're not relying on the existing structure to, to hold together during demolition. And, and then what they find when they go to, to construct the wall on top of the, what is there for a footing.
That's totally contradict to what we just heard last, at the last meeting, that they were going to use the existing footing.
Thank you.
And I question that, because it, I'm totally confused.
We are, we are, we are using some of the existing wall, but we're shoring up the existing wall with our sheeting and concrete fill. So, and then building on top of that. Because we're, because we're maintaining a maximum wall height, new wall height, that is the stone wall above the sheeting of five feet, we don't have to get into the same types of volume of stone that we would have to if we had to go down the full 12-foot depth. That's where we're saving our money. And also, it's a more reliable design, we feel, to generate competitive bids, because the unknown of, you know, it's difficult to cost estimate these types of alternatives where we're relying on the existing structure, because we don't really know enough information about the entire structure. We've done our borings, we've got an idea of what's in the ground out there, but all along the way, once they start, you don't know until they start putting shovels in the ground what they're up against. And that's when you get your change orders and your cost overruns. And, and by, at that point, it's, it's too late. You're already committed to the project. Now you've got an open wound and you have to fix it, and, and you're at the, the mercy of the contractor. So our, our proposal, we feel, will be a more predictable process for the contractor and, and for our cost estimator. And, and that's why we've made the choices that we've made about the types of materials. But just to give you an order of magnitude, to replace the entire north wall structure with a cast-in-place concrete wall that includes the footing, 2.85 million construction. And the same wall made from stone, we, we count it 2.5 million.
Which is more than the total project funding and budget.
Right, so that's why we rejected. It's one of the alternatives we considered, but it doesn't fit our budget.
So what is the design we're talking about submitting to, for plans? I, I don't understand. You just recommended that we do a granite face.
I'm sorry. The estimate that I just gave you was for replacing the, you asked about replacing in kind-
Oh, okay, okay.
The entire structure, made out of stone or concrete. That just gives you an order of magnitude about, about the difference in cost between the two materials. You know, we're basically building a wall that's half that height and, and then all the other structural elements that go along with that, so.
Weren't you saying that the plan that was submitted could have went before the full board?
There was no-
Is that what I understood?
Only if we approve it.
I'm talking the, the previous plan that was rejected with the riprap. That didn't go before the entire board. It was just somebody-
No.
Who looked at their plan initially and said he didn't think it would fly?
There was a project manager at CRMC that was assigned to us by the Assistant Director.
Yeah.
And appointed by the governor.
You know, I just have no faith in those people. That's why I'm, I'm wondering if we should just try to go back to the original affordable design and resubmit it. Because quite frankly, this whole wall idea, then, we've heard flowable fill, we've heard, you know, the last thing I, I don't, I, I mean, for filling in, you know, something and then capping it over offshore, with flowable fill. And then if the sheathing is not a decent sheathing and goes away in 10 or 12 years, you know, the flow of the fill's not going to hold anything. I just think, I don't know, we need something built there that's going to last for decades and decades and decades. And riprap, you know, it's-
We will specify the best materials that, that-
Yeah, but we can't afford that. That's the problem. We don't have the money to, you know, Bacon Davis Act and everything else. We don't have the money to, you know, build a stone wall there and, I don't know. It's just my opinion, we should go back to the old plan where we were looking to drive the piles closer to the center of the bridge to stop the water from going under the bridge and secure the north side, do as much as we can there.
So where, so do, have you prepared, you know, a, a cost estimate for this plan?
Yes.
It's got to be different than the cost estimate we were talking about three or four weeks ago, because there's an extra $500,000 in play now.
No, this is the same plan. We haven't done any changes, because we just heard about that extra money yesterday, so. Regardless of, of the money that's available, I understand that there's things that you want to do with your, with the site. There's choices to make on the details, like the handrail, the lighting, and different features that you might want to consider adding to the contract that would make this, you know, public space more usable. I recommend going that route, especially since, since it, it's only a cost estimate. We don't know if, if our bids are going to come in at that number. They might come in lower than that number. We've been pretty conservative about, about the unit costs that we're using, but this is an unusual project and, and there's no, you know, it's not like replacing curbing on the street where, you know, you can predict that the, what that's going to cost and what the bids are going to come in for that, you know, to within, you know, five or percent, you know, or less, you know? But on something like this, where this kind of work is unusual, it's, there's no good models to go by, you know, we can't predict the, the way the bids are going to come in accurately.
Well, I'm hearing change order, change order, change order. And there go the lights, there go the railing.
Do we have, do we have a copy of what that estimate looks like?
Uh, yes.
Madam President, I, I want to follow up on something you just said. How long has your company been doing projects like this?
VHB has been around for 35 years or something? I'm not sure exactly.
Now, you just said something that kind of, I'd written some stuff down. There are no other projects like this around?
Well, you know, when you, when you cost estimate something, you're looking at, you know, present dollar value and that kind of thing. And no, there aren't many stone bridge abutments in the state of Rhode Island and Airdance Bay that, that have had this kind of work done. It's a, it's a, there's a lot of moving parts to it. And, you know, that's what, that's the name of the game. You, you try to do your best cost estimate, you try to protect your client and make sure that, that you're, you're, you're giving them as accurate information as you possibly can, but there's no, anyone, any, any one in this profession will tell you, there's no exact way of, of estimating a job like this.
And I'm still a little bit confused on who approves all this? Who's, who's going to approve this? Is it us? Is it you? Is it Rideout? Is it?
No, no, we-
Well, CRMC will approve our, our design based on, on how it's impacting their jurisdiction. And then if, if you go forward with the, the Rideout agreement to have them do the advertising and the bid documents and the construction services, then they're going to have a lot to say about how that goes. And it's in, you know, they're, they're good at putting out projects like this and getting the bidding legal and fair. So it's, you know, I don't know if, if Matt's broken down the numbers for construction services, materials testing, and that, and the bid process, but it's a chunk, it's a chunk of money that, that-
Yeah, and it's not the direction I'm going if I'm going to make recommendations at some point to the council. I, I guess, Jack, what is good for you is to see the level to which your client doesn't feel comfortable at all. And we can't resolve that discomfort at this point on assurances from VHB, because you've been on it for 12 years and we've paid over quarter million dollars for engineering. Not on your word alone, nor should the town council proceed with Rideout. My gosh, we started in the spring of 2015 asking for a project accounting, because the concept was, tell us how much money is available so we can manage expectations of the town and its people of what's going to be built there. And they couldn't answer that question. And in October of 2015, they sent us this bombastic letter that said they had no money left. And we started from scratch with a brand-new director and a brand-new governor and new senior staff. Half the staff was put on administrative leave, for God's sake, so we got whoever was left standing. A good man, who has, quite frankly, patiently followed this through and has been with us since we made the case back in the early spring of this year that this was a desperately needed project, and he agreed and he's moved it along, but it has taken him this long, till June 22nd, to come clean with a letter on, that we still don't know that we can entirely believe. So you're asking the town, that is the owner of this asset and will be the owner of the improvement, to take everybody's word for it who has at this point not been able to answer any questions. Madam President, my recommendations would include at least a couple of key elements. One is, this project desperately needs peer review. I, I don't think, speaking only for myself and my personal opinion, that if what Mr. Madden just said is true, that there are a lot of moving parts to this project and there are going to be a certain number of gray areas, we ought to have an engineering firm that we trust or that we recruit to review this project in detail. Devil's, devil's advocate, Jack, because if the project's that challenging, let's, let's make sure we get more than one opinion. If we had a serious medical condition, we'd go seek a second opinion from another doctor. It's just part of what things need to be done. I asked one firm, our consulting engineer, to provide me with a cost estimate that peer reviewed, it was $12,000. It might be the wisest $12,000 the town ever spends, because if you've designed a bad project, it'll get caught. If you've designed a good project, then we can at least start to believe you. So it's a win-win, no matter what we do. So that's one recommendation I would put to the council. The second is, let's go back to that committee structure and engage, at least in my opinion, two members of the council and a couple of our experts, you know, deeply passionate people who have knowledge of the waters and knowledge of the town, to be involved in project oversight and to push this thing. The town administrator has to be on that. And I think that will help us get more accountability in the final analysis. If you were asking me, if I had my druthers, no offense, Jack, but if I had my druthers, I'd have you finish your contract and then I would really grill you and I wouldn't necessarily rehire you to take this across the finish line. That's just my personal opinion. But there's going to be a level of negotiation with Rideout. And you know what they say, you don't yell at the guy who buys newsprint by the roll and ink by the barrel. Well, you don't argue with people, thank you, Tom, you don't argue with people who hold all the cards and all the money, either. If they're willing to work with us and possibly exceed their original budget estimate and absorb the costs themselves, I don't want to recommend that we look a gift horse in the mouth. I think we do need to explain to them why we feel the way we do and at the same time, try to keep that relationship intact. Perhaps taking that one first step of peer review will give us the basis for going forward.
I know you have some thoughts about, about the community members of this committee.
Well, the council chose a fine time to disappear, but I would, would have hoped that Councilor Mello and Councilor Pelletier would be involved if they chose to agree. I've had thoughts that perhaps, I personally have a deep respect for Dave Vanier, who was the former harbor master for the town. Knows the waters very well, is a member of the Harbor Commission and thus can represent them. And then Trish had given me another name.
David Adams Soret.
Dave Soret, from the planning board, right. Because of his construction background. And of all the members of the planning board, Dave has been the most opinionated and vocal, to me personally, thinking about how this project should be done. And because he has construction experience, his, his knowledge would be valuable to the town.
Peter, what you missed is the structure of this committee. Matt's recommending you and Brett to be the two counselors. The outside citizens would be David Vanier-
Vanier.
And David Soret. And then Matt would be part of this committee. What do you think, Brett?
I think that's fine.
What? How about the planner, Dave says?
Typically, you would say the town administrator or his designee. I may not make every meeting. I would like the planner to be, to represent me at those meetings. But I think we have now elevated this to the point where we need accountability across the board. And I, I just feel like I have to put my shoulder to the grindstone on it.
Could I have opinions about the peer review from the council? Does anyone have an opinion?
I do, I have a question, really. I think it's an excellent idea to have a peer review. I think it's also an excellent idea to get the, get the viewpoint of our citizens. But ultimately, it seems we come down to a question of, okay, what if we can't agree? What if we can't agree on some aspect of the, the construction? Some aspect of the design? And we can't even agree on so, on any aspect of how much money is going to be spent? Assume that there's a difference of opinion.
Between us and Rideout?
Yeah, between you and Rideout or CRMC or anyone else. I guess what I'm trying to find out is, what's the thinking right now? And I, and I under- And I understand, you know, you have to take this slow but sure and get a feel for it, but what's the thinking right now in terms of what role our group, whether it's the peer review group or the group that's working with the peer review people, uh, what role do they play? If you, if you get to some point where you just can't agree, for example, the money pot. I don't know how much money we could ever contribute as a town to this project, so it seems to me that the money is coming one way or the other through the state, even though some of it may have been through a federal program. If we disagree on how much should be spent, how much should be spent on the railing, for example, that Joe has mentioned, uh, who makes the final decision on that?
Would be the town council.
The town council. So I'm not recommending that you...
We have to point on having it with that. Well, what, uh, so we make a decision, okay, we don't agree with that amount of money being spent. Exactly what step do we take after that? Do we come up with the money? Do we come up with the new design? Do we bill the, bill the, uh, peer? I don't know. How far, I'm just getting, I just want some, some thought on this. I mean, just how far do we go as a town council in saying, well, we're going to make the final decision. It's in our town, I understand that. We own the property, I understand that. But just how far can we go as a town in making sure that it meets our requirements and then what we want here as a town council?
Can I just, can I just poke in with saying DOT has to approve of the ninety percent design?
That's right.
Um, so, no, is the, is the answer. Do we have final authority? No, but we have a relationship with them. We present a, a plan that has been through the wringer, and then DOT says yes or no.
So if, and I, and I, that's, that would be my understanding, what Brett is saying, that we would make, through the advice of our, uh, peer review group, or peer review person, whoever we hire, and I assume we'd have to pay for that as a town, we would be making recommendations to, to RIDOT. And, uh, and hopefully that would have some influence, uh, on, on whatever the final decision is. But, uh, when push comes to shove, uh, I, it, it sounds to me as though we're going to have to compromise, hopefully the other side is prepared to compromise, but gee, if you don't get to that point, uh, who makes the final decision?
I mean, I mean, all RIDOT has to do is give the green light. They, I mean, I, they don't, they're not going to engineer this project, they're not going to renegotiate the project, they're going to approve of the expenditures that we incur as we audit and certify them, um, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just throwing something out. For example, we've, we've been given the numbers as to what funds are available, and those funds would be paid for the reconstruction, I understand that. What if for some reason we come up with a number of two or $300,000 more, $400,000 or $500,000 more? We don't expect the state or the federal government to chip in with that extra money, do we?
No, and by contract, it's our, it's our responsibility for any...
So on the financial end, we already know just how far we can go.
Correct, and Councilman Pelletier has said it.
And for some extent, what, what that financial, what that number is will dictate for us exactly how far we can go in terms of what the construction is, what materials we're using, what the design is. So i- in that secondary sense, they also have some control, whoever controls the money controls the project.
I, I think what it is, Jay, is that at least we'll have a voice in this matter.
Oh, absolutely, I, I agree a hundred percent.
I think this committee...
We're not going to spend any more money than what we're going to be given.
Dave, I agree a hundred percent. All I'm trying to do with the conversation is to make sure we're not unrealistic.
No, we can't spend any...
Because we can't, we can't force the point.
No.
That, that's it. As a town, we're not in a position to force this, any, any of our points.
Yeah, I agree.
With RIDOT or CRMC.
But I think it's just to have a...
We have to be realistic.
I think it's just to have a voice in the matter and, and make recommendations to them that they might agree with or not agree with, and if they don't, they are going to pay the bill eventually.
Madam President, I just, just want to say, Jay, I disagree with you a hundred percent that we don't have a say. All right? I mean, the squeaky wheel gets the oil. You got it, we may have to go, right, we may have to all go to Armando's office and get her to go downstairs and tell the guys at CRMC to get off their duffs and get the work done correctly. If that's what it takes, that's what we're going to have to do. It, you can't just say, we can't do anything because...
No, no, no.
No, 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 we have to speak out. This has been, you know, and it's been a comedy of errors at the DOT for years.
Joe, 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 that's not what I said at all.
It's been a comedy of error at the DOT for years.
Okay.
All right, it's time to hold them accountable. And if it takes a little bit of political push, that's what it's going to take. We need to have a design that, that fits within the budget, and we need to make sure that that design is well-engineered so that there isn't any wiggle room to continue, like you're saying, to jack the price up.
Joe, that's exactly what I'm saying. We should be prepared to make recommendations.
Yeah.
We should be prepared to make contributions in what the thinking is on the design, spend, so on, so, the oversight, shoot us a...
It's been a comedy of errors, is what it's been.
I think we're also going to have to be as realistic as possible. And one thing that we have to be realistic on is how much money is spent.
Right.
We don't, we, we just don't have the money.
Nope.
The original plan had enough money.
All right, I'm going to move this forward just a little bit. Um, I want to entertain a motion to direct the town administrator to obtain a peer review. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that a motion, form of a motion.
And I'll second it.
I just had one question. Uh, funding for another engineering firm, where will that money come from?
All right, so we would, I'm going to, here's my plan. I would draw down against the project, not against the town's budget. I don't think I'm going to have any problem getting authorization to do that, but if I do, I'll come back to you before I do anything else.
I just have some questions, and, um, first of all, what are they going to be reviewing? And second of all, what is the scope of their services? Because we still haven't approved this design, and I haven't seen much more than a couple of, uh, sections, and this sheet, project budget, it's a preliminary ninety percent cost estimate from June ninth, um, which we, we were presented on, whatever the date was, the thirteenth of March, or whatever it was, um, May twenty-third, thank you. So I'd like to know what the scope of services is going to be, and I'd like to know what they're going to be reviewing, because I don't even know what this plan looks like yet.
We have, well, we have a full plan set showing the, the, the plan that we're waiting to, um, deliver to CRMC.
I would suggest that before you do that, you deliver them to us.
I, I did deliver them about two weeks ago.
Well, I would like to see them. Not right now, obviously.
I mean, it's a ninety percent, it's a preliminary ninety percent design, which means that...
Well, you sent us two things. You sent us that, a small set of drawings that was, that was labeled the preliminary ninety percent, and then we have your draft permit application that is much more detailed and much more thorough set of plans than what was provided earlier.
Yes.
So that, those are the two things you've sent us. And they're illegible, so I didn't reproduce them for you, because they're plan-sized documents that are in, on eight and a half by eleven. What you submitted to CRMC, obviously, would be full, full my lines, full plans.
Do we have at least a quarter or a half-size set that we can look at?
No, we can look, it's not illegible.
Okay.
And you're welcome to have it. In your own...
I, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm happy to initiate this process, um, but I want to make sure we're, we're doing it, you know, we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, I, I think the scope of work for this peer review would be decided by the committee, that was just formed.
Okay, then I'm happy to take that conversation to that.
And we're going to have to hustle to get this done quickly, but I think we have the time, and I don't think we'll have the right people in the room to, to determine, first of all, how many different things we want to look at with the peer review, and then decide the scope of work.
Do we need a motion to start that off, though?
There's already a motion.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted to make sure I did the right thing.
And on Monday, I'll come up with a draft resolution for the, uh, subcommittee.
You will have to put that on the agenda. All right, um, so I have a motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor, unanimous? And you will come with the resolution for the Monday agenda, and we'll make sure we put that on.
Madam President, I just, um, I want to...
Go ahead.
Sorry. I'm taking notes at the same time. So what is our schedule, and I guess this is a question for everybody, but mostly you, Jack? What is the, what is the logical schedule? I mean, clearly, we are, we are not on the same page, because you were under the, um, assumption or the baseline data that it's going to take six months at least for plan review at CR, CRMC, we're going to need a hearing, et cetera, et cetera. And that does not fall within the con, the context of the, um, the assumptions we've had for the last year or so, that we would be ready, uh, to go out to bid in, at the latest December, January, we would have drawings in August or September, we would be breaking ground the first warm day in the spring. That is, once again, seems like it's off the table. Um, again, I'll just reiterate that, that this is the first time we are hearing this information, um, that our assumptions are contrary to what is reality. I don't know whose fault that is, but, um, we are not communicating well.
Okay. May I speak for that?
You probably should.
Um, I have a summary of, of the process right here, which, um, is probably illegible from the board, so I don't know. So in that March eighteenth meeting, um, it was discussed with the town and with RIDOT that we would, uh, move ahead with, um, design and permitting and, um, try to present to the town council in May, um, our ninety percent plan going forward, prior to a CRMC, and get approval from the town, prior to our CRMC, um, application being submitted. Um, you know, our meeting with CRMC was April fifth. Um, we spent a few weeks, um, developing those two alternatives in response to their comments, and then, um, on May sixth, I submitted a, uh, the abbreviated ninety percent plan and section view that, that we developed, um, uh, on May eighteenth. Our, um, I'm sorry, on May sixth. On May eighteenth, I delivered a memo to the town council summarizing permitting and final design timeline, um, which spelled out, um, the schedule and, and, um, described the six-month CRMC process.
Do you have a copy of that?
I do.
I don't remember that, no.
I don't remember it. There's a lot of memos, but I don't remember that one.
It was requested of me, and I turned it around within a day.
To whom? Who received that?
Uh, I believe, I believe it was the planner. I can, I don't have the email with me, but I will, um, I, I will certainly forward that to you.
What, what is it?
It's this meeting in the memo.
You don't have it, Brett.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Because if, if the people who would have forwarded it to you don't know what it is, then there's no way we get it to you.
Okay. So while that's happening, we can, you can continue, we'll, we'll review this and...
Um, the following week was the town council meeting, we presented the ninety percent plan.
That was the twenty, that was the twenty-third of March?
The twenty-third of May.
Of May, sorry, I'm sorry.
And then, um, and then we had our internal schedule of finishing the CRMC permit application and ninety percent plan set by June third. And that was an internal decision for us, so that we could have it ready when you were, when you were ready to approve it with, with whatever mechanism that you would go through to approve it. Um, that is complete, it's waiting to go, it needs a couple of signatures.
But could I interrupt? So in May, though, we had a question about the funding, and that's why everything got stalled.
We also didn't... I understand, you're not comfortable with the, with the process.
But you moved ahead without anything...
There was actually no motion to approve that.
No, because the, the design, as was described to us, was so different, night and day different than what we're talking about today and what we're understanding today, that there was nothing, no action taken.
The plans that we delivered to you on May sixth, two weeks prior to that May twenty-third meeting, were, with the exception of the three-foot offset, it had a six-foot offset, it was the same plan, in terms of height, wall height elevations, sheeting elevation.
Right, but it, so, and there's no, there's no way of knowing the difference, except that there's a line iron that says wet stone wall. And when we were talking to, I don't even know what his name is, but he was here, from VHB.
Bill Santas.
And we asked what material that was going to be, and they said stamped concrete or a composite, like facade brick kind of thing, this composite stone material. And it was going to look a little bit like real stone, but it was not going to be real stone.
I believe what he said, if I remember correctly, was that it would either be a standard RIDOT ten-point-one-point-oh stone wall, which is, um, granite stone with standard masonry construction, or a cast, a pre-cast...
Yes.
Concrete block wall.
Yes.
Which is a detail that he felt at the time wasn't, he wanted to put that option out there as a consideration, but because it wouldn't make any difference for our permitting set if we had the stone wall or the, the, um, pre-cast concrete block.
He didn't give, that wasn't an option, that was the final...
But so, so anyways, that, it's, it's more or less, in that, in that situation, it's a misunderstanding, and I apologize for that.
It's a good, I mean, it, it turns out to be better than, you know, what we were all conjuring in our heads and what we were all assuming to...
Well, that's why we sent the plans and, and, for review.
Yeah, but we don't get the plans, so we get one, ones, we get one eight and a half, one eight and a half by eleven, uh, wall section that's about this big, and that's to the extent of the plans that we have, this council has reviewed.
We emailed in a PDF, PDF format.
I'm not saying that that's your fault, just saying that's what we have.
Yeah, I, this is not actually going anywhere productive.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
Okay, honest with you, Jack. Can I, Mary, can I...
I just, I want to summarize, because we're all anxious to, to go, I think, I think we're reaching, I just want to reiterate one important thing about this evening's discussion. I think it is a pleasant surprise to hear you describing some of the materials that are going to be used. It is a pleasant surprise that the letter from David Fish promises a sum of money somewhat greater than we thought we had.
greater than we thought we had only two months ago. So what has happened has been progress. It may be uncomfortable for you for the next couple of months, maybe deservedly so. Not you personally, you've only been on this since March 2016. Maybe for others. It's not my first rodeo with some of the others. So, but I, I think everybody who's present here this evening and anybody who watches the tape should recognize that this is the truth, that if stone is used and the, the visual appeal of the structure is substantially better than it was back in the days of value engineering, that's a good thing. And if there's more money to do this from the efforts of our delegation and, and confirmation from Rideout, that's a good thing, too. But in order to have the confidence to take the next step, all the things that the council has discussed tonight are going to have to happen.
Any further discussion, Brett?
So just, just a one-word answer to, is there any feasible scenario in which we start construction in the calendar year 2017?
Yes, so...
I thought it was...
That was the one word. Yes.
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 Okay, all right.
But, but in order to do that, in order to do that, given that the different, right now, we are here. Okay? And if we were to deliver our application today, we would be here in six months.
Six months.
And if we, six, like four months beyond that, we'd be advertising it. And then it takes about a month for the bid, review and award. And then it takes, depending on how the contractor mobilizes, it would take a few weeks for construction to get started. It is doable.
Okay.
But time is, time is not on our side, so...
I think this committee is going to be able to move fast since there's only four people on or five people on. And the last question for Matt is, this is sort of a dangling something or other. This, I want to assure you that the money will be there through September 30th, 2016.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, one would therefore assume that it will not be there after the fact. So I, I think we need some clarification on that. And if we have to try and get these funds committed prior to getting a CRMC stamped permit, I, we got to, I don't want to do this in, in January, CR, Rideout say, actually, you know, the money is not there anymore because we told you I had to spend it last year. They know damn well that the schedule is going to be what it is. They've been at the table, we haven't. So I, I don't think that's going to be a problem, but I want to make sure that it's not.
Another, I think there's too many unknowns because I need to understand what that process is. Can they encumber funds the way we do? You anticipate that an expense is, is already obligated, but the calendar's marching more quickly than the, than the process, so you just encumber the funds. We don't want to play any risk with this because this was the town's number one priority on its tip list request and it was put into this federal fiscal year in order to accommodate the town. And so we don't want to see things that, if you've been following this with Rideout around the state, projects slip, not just one or two years. If you don't get it done on schedule, it gets pumped back out four or five years hence. And this structure alone won't survive, quite possibly, four or five more years. So we've, we've verified that date, but we'll also try to see what authority the DOT has. Because frankly, I mean, anybody can add, September 2016 is only three months away, so a six-month process is going to take you past that. So, you know, it's, it's a question that has to be answered within the next 24 hours.
Yes.
I think the answer is in the letter. It says the 2.33 million of federal funding under the tap will be obligated once the project is ready to be advertised for construction. So if you don't make the advertising by September 30th, I don't think you have it obligated.
We were just told that would not happen because of the six-month process.
So if the CRMC process takes six months, then there is no way we're going to make it...
And that's a, and that's a big if. And I, I see where you're coming from and you're 100% correct. So long as all of our assumption that the six-month timeframe is something set in stone can't be changed, there are, there are plenty of times when various agencies, including this town council, accelerates its schedule of consideration for things for very good reasons. And this may be one of those instances.
Are we going to go out and hire another firm?
This committee will make it.
Yeah, I will determine where it can be paid for from. If the assumption that I have made that this can be charged against the project fund is, holds out, then I'll simply proceed on that basis. If I need to find any other source of funding, I will not do so, I will come back to the council with other thoughts.
Is that going to push this project back even for...
Oh, no, I, I think we're going to do this, make this decision in the next, before Friday.
Right.
Yeah.
This is going to happen quick.
As I already have the estimate in hand, so now the question is, I mean, frankly, I think we control what federal funds remain, so it's a, it's a balance inquiry against that and see if we can simply obligate it ourselves.
Yeah, as long as we can certify the, or they can certify the costs. And Monday, we'll have a legally established organization and I'm sure we can jump to a meeting, even if it's at weird hours ASAP.
All right. Anything further?
I have it. Were the, were the core borings, with that, with the prints stuff, with that information with it? Just wanted what the data was. I wanted to... Joe, I, I have it. So after the meeting, let's just, just grab me for five seconds. I'd like to cut. Yeah, I'd like to look at that, please.
And I have one other thing. So Matt confirmed once again that only the town council has any right to control this project and approve yea or nay. So just for the record, I'm going to pass this up to the town council, a memo that was drafted in April 2015, boy, just your video.
We have to give a copy to the... I'm going to get one, I'm going to get it to you. You haven't got the copy?
Yep.
All right, so you just want to make it clear that we have, we are managing the project and nobody can change that unless it's our authority. Is that correct, Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
You know what I think their problem is? We're getting so many memos from, you get one from David, David Fish, who's supposedly in charge. You get another one from this Thomas, wherever he is, who's supposedly in charge. Who's in charge?
Well, he wasn't. This, this man.
Who do I believe?
No, what this letter is, is a summary of a verbal conversation in 2014, frankly, in 2014, about who will manage the construction project based on the information available at that time.
Okay.
With the deteriorating condition of the bridge. And we all went down there together, you know, my picture's in the paper, yada, yada, yada. The only sentence in this document that matters is this one. "The current agreement will need to be revised."
And never.
And it never has been.
And it's never been revised?
No, and at this point, I never would suggest it. Because after all, we were a somewhat different fraternity back here. Back here, everybody kind of thought they knew what they were doing, talking about, the February 24th, 2014 contract and the deteriorating condition of the abutment.
I just have one request for either Monday or the next meeting. It may be in here, Matt, you'd be able to tell me if it is. The contract with VHB.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if it's in this packet. I, I can't remember seeing, I don't remember seeing it, but if not, I'd like to at least review it so that we, we know the deliverables, the schedule, well, not the schedule, that's gone, but the deliverables and what the expectations are and where our relationship is and what the next step is going to look, have to look like.
I will get you that, it is in this backup. It's a profoundly old document.
I imagine it will.
And what, what's in this backup includes a lot of the change orders that were done to get to the 230 figure, including the borings by GZA.
Yeah, I'll review this.
So I got to get you the...
I just got off the plane last night.
Anything else?
And I would just like, again, Matt, to have Tite, Attorney Tite's memo regarding the 204. Not that it matters to anyone, but I would like to review that, please.
All right. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll sag it.
Joe jumped at that. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?